And happy new year. Welcome to our January 15th city council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Haudischel.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Here, thank you. I would like to request that our new fire chief, Ryan Harrigan, please leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carmen, would you please announce the meeting procedures?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council Meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the city council and not to staff members or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For items not appearing on the agenda, members of the public may address the city council regarding items that are not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our city council. Public comment period is limited to 25 minutes for the first segment, and each speaker will have three minutes. If the time limitation is reached in this first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking actions on items that are not listed on the agenda. Those items that are appearing on the agenda, the Brown Act allows for public comments on all items listed on tonight's agenda. Speakers will have five minutes to provide input and should be relevant to the item being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. The city council encourages public participation and requests that you please be courteous during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the city council, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville, and we thank you for your civic participation tonight.
Thank you for that. Okay, we will start off this evening. We have two presentations. Jana, would you like to meet me at the podium? Good evening.
Good evening.
You look good this night.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice to see you. Well, we have a very distinguished city employee, Jana Cervantes, who is retiring. Decided it's time, right?
Decided it's time, yeah.
Okay. Well, the council would like to read part of your resolution, and then you'll have a few moments if you want to say something, but you don't feel, you don't have to. No pressure. Okay.
Whereas Jana, Jana?
Jana.
Jana Cervantes began her distinguished career as an Assistant Engineer I with the City of Roseville on October 5th, 1998. And where in October of 1999, Jana was promoted to Assistant Engineer II, and in 2003 received a Pride of Roseville Customer Service Award for her above and beyond work putting together a DUI memorial dedication. And?
Whereas in October of 2004, Jana was promoted to the position of Project Engineer in the city's traffic division, and in May 2005, Jana joined the Roseville Major Accident Investigation Team in its inception and has remained on the team for the past two decades. And?
Whereas Jana was promoted to Associate Engineer in April of 2006, and Jana successfully completed the statewide examination to become a duly licensed traffic engineer in California in March of 2007, and Jana received a Pride of Roseville Team Commendation of Excellence Award as a member of the Riverside Streetscape and Infrastructure Improvement Team in 2009. And?
Whereas on June 28th, 2014, Jana was promoted to Senior Engineer overseeing the city's traffic engineering group in Public Works. And in 2019, Jana was nominated for the Innovation Top Team Pride of Roseville Award for Innovation and Technological Advancements of the city's Intelligent Transportation System. And?
And whereas, again in 2023, she received a Pride of Roseville Distinguished Service Award, celebrating over 25 years with the City of Roseville as a dedicated and exemplary city employee. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Roseville that Jana Cervantes be commended for 26 years of outstanding service and dedication to the City of Roseville and the Public Works Department. And we want to congratulate you for your accomplishments and wish you a long, healthy, and enjoyable retirement.
Thank you.
I know, I know all of us on the council, whenever a resident writes in about our roads, it gets to you.
It does.
And you are always very helpful about explaining the whys and hows for our residents, and you will absolutely be missed.
Thank you.
So here's a resolution. If you want to say a few words, and I know we ran late from our last meeting, but would you like to have a group photo when we're finished, too?
Yes.
Okay, we should do it.
Finish the meeting or finish right now?
No, finish right now. So we'll say a few, we won't, we won't make you say.
Thank you. I've loved every minute of working here. A lot of the best things in my life have happened. I didn't work right, happened here. And all of my staff is here, and I want to thank them so much. So thank you.
We have one more person here this evening that decided that it's time for them to retire. Lisa?
Let's start with this.
What's going on here? This retirement?
So we'll, we'll get started. The council would like to make some comments from your resolution.
Whereas Lisa Gist began her dedicated service with the City of Roseville in 2005 as an administrative analyst in Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Department, bringing a wealth of experience from her previous work with the state of California. And Lisa's talents and dedication led to her transition to Roseville Electric as an Electric Business Analyst, where she made significant improvements to the department's Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, accounting process. And?
Whereas Lisa's role in the city's Enterprise Resource Planning Implementation Project demonstrated her deep expertise and commitment to improving financial systems, serving as the department advocate, and co-creating the department analyst ERP work group, working group, to ensure comprehensive input from key financial staff. And?
Whereas in 2019, Lisa was honored with the Pride of Roseville Award for her instrumental role in successfully implementing the city's ERP system. And again, in 2023, Lisa was honored with the Pride of Roseville Distinguished Service Award for her outstanding long-term service and her contributions to improving the city's overtime practices under FLSA, both of which have had lasting positive impacts on the city's operations. And?
Whereas in 2020, Lisa was promoted to Finance Manager overseeing the payroll and accounts payable divisions, and making a significant contribution to high-level projects such as the workforce software upgrade and improving citywide overtime practices in compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. And Lisa's leadership in developing the city's annual position budget has been invaluable, as she meticulously ensures that all components, including payroll, benefits, salary schedules, and overtime, are thoroughly analyzed and accurately reported. And?
And Lisa has been a vital resource to the finance department and across the city, offering her extensive knowledge in budgeting, accounting, payroll, and financial system, and has consistently demonstrated a commitment to continuous improvement and ensuring the city's financial operations run smoothly. Lisa's supportive and caring nature has made her not only a valued colleague, but also a trusted mentor and friend to many. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Roseville City Council, that Lisa just be commended for 19 years of outstanding service and dedication to the City of Roseville and the finance department, we want to congratulate you for your accomplishments, and we want to wish you a long, healthy, and enjoyable retirement. All the best to you.
It's been my pleasure to serve the city for almost 20 years. I've had the pleasure to work in three different departments with some amazing department heads and some amazing support staff. And I leave you in good hands with a great team, and I look forward to lots and lots of travel in my retirement.
Will there be trips to distant land?
Absolutely, and there might be one in the next 30 days. Thank you. Can I invite the department heads from Park Recreation and Libraries, Electric, and Finance to join me in the picture, and of course, Dom?
Your picture?
Yeah.
Have to squeeze in tight. Be friendly.
Looks great. I'll email it to you.
Congratulations, Lisa. Congratulations.
Oh, wait, she left before I could say something to her.
Oh, my God, Jana.
Yeah.
Come back.
Okay, we'll move, we're moving, we're moving on.
Okay. Because I'm not the mayor anymore.
Okay, we will move on to public comment. Do you want to?
Thank you.
Consent calendar? Is there anyone tonight who would like to make a public comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Now would be your time to come forward.
First question, where do I leave this form?
We'll take it. We can take it, but you can go ahead and make your comments, and then?
Good evening, members of the Roseville City Council. My name is Kirk Penelope Bongesner. I'm coming before you tonight to express my dismay and frustration with the City of Roseville for destroying a mural. The purpose of a mural is to serve as a vital record of history, culture, and society while allowing us to understand the past civilization and values with providing aesthetic enjoyment and continuing education to inspire the future generations. Mural I'm speaking of was on the wall in the senior lounge at the Mido Community Center. It was painted about 2010 by a local artist and depicted a Mido tribe a couple of hundred years ago, where the elders were teaching children life skills. When I entered the lounge on January 6th after the Christmas break, the wall had been entirely painted a very dark navy blue, and that was the only wall that was painted. I was shocked and became very angry, letting the supervisor of Mido Community Center know what I was feeling. I was angry because I felt it showed disrespect to the local native people, the seniors of the Mido Fab Club, and the artist who painted a thoughtful and thought-provoking picture. Let paper stick together. I was told that a professional picture was taken of the mural and is on display at the Mido Indian Museum, but a picture is not the same thing as a mural and will not be able to do justice to the original beautiful work that was destroyed. I've had the opportunity to speak with other seniors who've come into Mido Community Center, and more than a handful of them have expressed the same dismay that I am experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take your card up here, too. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment on any item that's on the agenda? Come forward. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Chapman. I'm a resident at the terraces of Roseville, and our purpose tonight is to make a request for next meeting's agenda. We are requesting that the council will actually consider and vote on a fee waiver or refund for an appeal that we will be filing next Tuesday on a decision the planning commission made last Thursday regarding a building proposal adjacent to our senior living facility, for which we had requested an extension on the public review period, public comment period, very reasonably. The 30-day period was over the holidays. It was from December 5th to January 6th, and I had actually had contact with the planning commission in November before Thanksgiving. I hadn't been sent a notice. Because we are tenants living adjacent to the project, not owners in a condo, only one notice was sent to the building. Don't even know the whole pathway of that notice, but our executive director was on vacation. Eventually, maybe it did make its way to the San Diego corporate headquarters of the people that own the property, but we didn't actually get notified. I was aware that there was going to be a hearing at some point after the holidays, but I didn't know about the public review period and the actual date of the hearing, even though I'd been in touch with the planning commission. So there will be a lot in our appeal detailing everything. We're primarily, one of the primary concerns is there's no traffic study, and this is extremely a high-risk situation with 200 senior citizens. Jerry's going to talk a little bit more about the, you know, the community of people that live there, but we've got 200 people, plus all the fire engines and ambulances, and the 90 employees that work there, and the families that visit, and there's just an enormous amount of traffic, to which Dutch Brothers has added additional traffic, and there's going to be more traffic with this medical office building, and it needs a site-specific, in-depth, you know, study with data that you have on accidents and data that you have on the use of this area. And so there's a lot to it to look at and to consider, and so we're really hoping that you will consider waiving this fee that will cost us $1,735 to file this appeal that will, in essence, allow us to achieve our goal of having, you know, some input into this for you. So anyway, that's the nature of our request. Please put this fee waiver request, refund request, on next meeting's agenda, which will occur after the appeal gets filed, and there's a lot more from the planning commission that you can also see. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good day. I thank you also for allowing us to come. My name is Jerry Fuller, and I'm also a resident at terraces of Roseville. I don't know if any of you have ever, ever had any parents or grandparents or anybody at a senior living care. Terraces is interesting because it has both independent living, dependent living, and hospice in the 200 people that live there. And the location is sort of sucked back off of Sunrise Avenue, and the traffic can be absolutely horrible, as she mentioned. And the thing about the, a lot of people there do not have cars, but their children and grandchildren come and take them to medical appointments and to other things, Christmas parties, whatever, but they are driven out. But most do not have cars or any other transportation, per se, to go places that they need to go. And there have been numerous accidents leaving our property, both people coming from Dutch Brothers and Carden Medical. And it's been quite unique, very unique, living there. I have a car, she has a car, and we can tell you, it's very interesting trying to exit our property and especially turning left, turning south on Sunrise. The thing that's interesting also is because of the extra traffic that is going to be added, there's going to be, they claim 60 more parking spots at the new building, adding more cars. But many, many of the residents there have electric scooters, electric wheelchairs, and the only exercise they really get is to drive up and down the sidewalks, going out toward Sunrise and fresh air, and driving around the building, et cetera. And we're concerned about the traffic, concerned about their safety. And I, I don't have electric things. I have a walker, two different walkers, but I have a car, so I can leave. But I'm terrified sometimes, rush hour, morning and afternoon, and Saturday mornings especially. It's a zoo on Sunrise. But I want to thank you very much for listening to us, and we hope that you take into consideration, because, let's see, the waiver and refund that we're asking for, because it's, if you get a chance, come out and look at it, particularly rush hour, and I think you'll find it interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Fuller. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to make a comment on any item that's on the agenda? Now's your time to come forward. Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for the discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there a member of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion tonight? Seeing none. Tonight, on consent, the city council will consider consent calendar items 7.1 through 7.18. And may I please have a motion to?
Move the consent calendar or approve?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haudischel.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Okay, and we will move on now. We have item 8.1, park naming recommendations. Good evening, Jill and Tara.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the council. I'm Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director. My pleasure to be here tonight with Tara G., our Park Planning and Development Manager, to present park naming recommendations for your consideration. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Tara.
Thanks, Jill. It's a pleasure to be here, and tonight we are making recommendations for three new parks and four existing dog parks. So to summarize this agenda item, the action tonight is to approve the name recommendations submitted by the Park Naming Subcommittee, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission. As background, on an annual basis, each July, park name suggestions are solicited for new parks that will enter into the construction phase of development within the current fiscal year. The name suggestion period is open for one, one month, and the subcommittee is made up of the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director, myself, the Park Planning and Development Manager, a Park Development Project Manager, a Parks or Superintendent or Manager, a PR Staff in, at Large, and a staff member from the Development Services Department. With the exception of the Director, myself, community members serve a two-year term. So for the 2024 year naming, the submission period opened July 1st, 2024, and the period ran, again, was for, solicited suggestions for three new parks that were to be open to the public soon. The name suggestion period closed July 31st, and the parks subject to be named will begin construction in the spring of 2025. For this period, we received 25 suggestions, and four of these suggestions related to our four existing dog parks. Typically, names suggested by in the previous year are eligible for consideration for the current year. However, in 2023, we had no new parks to name, we named them all, and therefore, the subcommittee reviewed the 24 names suggested in 2022 and considered those names to be active and considered those names to be active and available for consideration. So this map shows the locations of the parks to be named. As you can see, they're all on the west side of town. And these are shown in blue stars and includes C-63 in Creekview, KT-52 and FD-51, both in the Sierra Vista area. The green star shows the locations of the existing or about to be opened dog parks suggested to be named. These include Denial Family Park and Hughes Park, Campus Oaks and Sogstad Park. Sogstad Park, as a side note, is scheduled to be expanded in 2025. For ease, I will present each park name recommendation pause after each park, so council may discuss these at one time. And I will, however, present all of the dog parks in one session, in one component. So the first one, C-63, it's in 2.5-acre neighborhood park located in the Creekview area. The streets surrounding the park are Lemonade Lane, Treehouse Lane, Lower Bank Drive, Grass Creek Drive. The park will have half-court for basketball, a children's play area and swing area, picnic area, walkways, turf and landscaping. Per the park naming policy, one of the criteria is the recognition of geographical locations, such as street names, subdivision names, or more. In consideration of that, the name recommendation is Lower Bank Park. Lower Bank Drive is the main road into the subdivision and is on the south end of the park, which is at the bottom of this slide. So at this moment, I will pause so that council may discuss and potentially take action on this recommendation.
Council, have any comments?
I don't have an issue.
That's fine. And I just, are we good with this format, or do we want to hear all of them in its entirety?
All of them.
Do you want to work to do all of them? Yep. And then we can just kind of process if that works for you, Tara.
Sounds good. I will keep going.
Okay.
So the next one is KT-52. This is a school park site that is about 7.6 acres and located in the Sierra Vista Plan area on Sierra Village Drive at Silver Spruce, west of Westbrook Drive. It is located adjacent to a future elementary school. Plans for the site include a youth cricket or multi-youth field, a children's play area, a picnic area, a full-size basketball court, off-street parking, a lute pathway, and nature play area and landscaping. Similar to the C-63 name recommendation related to the geographical location criteria of the naming policy, the name recommendation is Silver Spruce Park. The street, Silver Spruce Drive, is the street located on the west of the park. And in this graphic here, it's at the bottom of your slide. FD-51, this is a 1.1-acre neighborhood park site and is located in the Sierra Vista Plan area as well. The park backs onto open space, which includes a drainage basin. It's on the corner of Earl Rush Drive and Market Street. The park will include a small turf area and picnic area. The site will also include trees and nature trails. The Subcommittee offered two names to the Parks Recreation Commission. Per the naming policy, the first name recommendation recognizes an individual who has made significant volunteer contributions toward the quality of life to the Roseville community and its residents. Meeting this criteria is Rocky Rockhome. Rocky's name was suggested in 2022. Rocky served with the Roseville Police Department for 21 years and retired in 1996. He served as a police officer, DUI enforcement officer, narcotics detective, and was the first supervisor in the Neighborhood Policing Unit as a sergeant. Additionally, Rocky was involved in creating and implementing new and innovative programs, including the Street Crimes Action Team, the DARA program, Tommy Apostolos Fund, COPS Care Camps, and the Police Activity League. He was an adjunct professor at the Los Rios Community College, teaching in their law enforcement programs. Rocky was a Roseville City Council Member who also served as mayor. After his term with council ended, he served on the Placer County Board of Supervisors. And Rocky passed away in 2018. The second suggestion met the criteria of recognizing a natural or geographical feature. The suggestion of Basin View Park is a name describing the view shed from the park where the elevation of the park is higher and becomes an overlook across the adjacent open space and drainage basin. After discussion at the Parks and Recreation Commission, they elected to recommend Rocky Rockhome as the park name. And now for the dog parks. Bear with me, these are long. Consistent with the naming criteria allowing naming of special features, such as playgrounds and dog parks, we received suggestions for four existing dog parks. These suggestions continue the tradition of dog parks being named after Roseville canines. We currently have Marco Dog Park at Sierra Garden, Bear Dog Park at Mahaney Park, and Apollo Dog Park off of Antelope Creek, not far from the Galleria. It seemed fitting to name the other existing or about to be completed dog parks in the same manner. It is being recommended that the dog park at Campus Oaks Park be named Arno Dog Park. Canine Arno entered service in 1996 and was partnered with Officer Cal Wallstand. Arno was cross-trained in patrol work and narcotics detection. He was a long-tail German Shepherd. Arno and Officer Wallstand also worked with the SWAT team whenever canine was needed. When Officer Wallstand became detective, Arno stayed in service and became the first Roseville Police Department K-9 detective. Arno won the gold medal in the police and fire games, and Arno retired in 2008. I love reading these about the dogs, by the way. So the dog park at Sogstad Park is recommended to be named Eros Dog Park. Eros came to the police department after a short career with the Royal Canadian Mounted Police in 2021. His partner was Officer Gage Lowly. Eros was also a patrol and narcotics detection canine and was deployed for over 1,300 times, logged over 1,900 hours in training. He was involved in many major law enforcement responses, including a manhunt for suspect in the shooting of two law enforcement officers in 2014. He was an outstanding ambassador visiting schools, social organizations, and community events. Eros retired in 2019 and passed away in 2024. The dog park at Denial Family Park is recommended to be named Fargo Dog Park. Fargo was born in 2009 in the Czech Republic and entered police service in 200... Nope, that's wrong. 2000-something after that. I have 2002 after that. I think it was two years later, actually. He was assigned to Officer Josh Wheeler. He was a small German Shepherd, but up for size. He was, for his size, he was, had a tenacity to find suspects. Fargo and Officer Wheeler had a knack for hanging around where suspects were lost. And when the officers cleared the way, they hung out, only to catch the suspect when they thought the coast was clear. In one instance, Fargo chased the suspect. And when Officer Wheeler rounded the corner, the suspect was hanging from a wall where he was trying to climb over, only to have Fargo hanging on his leg. Fargo had more apprehensions than any other police canine in its history. And he retired, serviced in 2011, and passed away in 2013. And last but not least, the dog park at Hughes Park be named Zig and Evo Dog Park. So why two dog names for one park? This is because both Canines Zig and Evo partnered with Chris Nowicki. So Canine Zig was born in the Czech Republic and was Nowicki's first canine officer. Zig entered into police service in 2000. He also found many suspects who were hiding in exceptionally difficult locations. One such area was tracking down a commercial suspect hiding in a marsh. As a suspect tried to swim away, Zig made the apprehension while swimming. Zig was also trained in narcotics detection and, in one case, detected cocaine hidden in a garage. The find included over $10,000 in cash and resulted in the seizure of several vehicles and became part of a federal investigation. Zig retired in 2005 and passed away in 2009. Canine Evo became Officer Nowicki's second partner in 2005. Evo was on scene at the 2010 Galleria Fire, where he and Officer Nowicki was deployed inside the mall with SWAT until the size of the fire forced them to evacuate. Evo's presence resulted in numerous no-bite apprehensions, where suspects surrendered solely because they heard him coming. An example was a suspect trying to hide in a pile of laundry and promptly surrendered when he heard Evo coming. In another instance, Evo found a safe in a crawl space in a house. The safe contained a large amount of drugs that would have otherwise gone undetected. Canine Evo retired in 2010 and passed away in 2014. So this concludes my presentation of the name recommendations from both the Subcommittee, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I know there's some people here that might be available to speak as well.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions regarding the presentation or comments?
I don't.
Okay, I do. I can wait. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item?
City Council staff, my name is Bruce Hager, a resident of Roseville. I guess part of the problem of nominating somebody for a park name is it's read back for you guys later on. So I'm going to go down to the last line because everything Tara said is basically what I was going to say tonight. What Rocky has done for the city was just the tip of the iceberg that was talked about this evening. In keeping my remarks short, I'm asking for your yes vote for tonight. I believe his granddaughter, Sarah, would like to say something.
Hi, my name is Sarah Madison. I'm going to speak on behalf of our family. Good evening, esteemed members of the Roseville community, city leaders, and honored guests. It is a profound privilege to stand before you today and nominate my grandfather, F.C. Rocky Rockhome, for the incredible honor of having the park named in his memory. This recognition would not only commemorate his extraordinary life, but symbolize the values that he cherished and embodied every single day. My grandfather spent his life in service of others, a calling he answered in every role he held. From his early career as a dedicated police officer to his transformative years as mayor, city council member, and county supervisor, he was a man who believed deeply in the power of public service. He was not driven by personal ambition, but by an unwavering commitment to the well-being of the people of Roseville. One of his proudest accomplishments was the introduction of Problem-Oriented Policing Program, a groundbreaking initiative that he championed with passion and vision. He believed in innovative solutions and, more importantly, in the strength of collaboration between law enforcement and the community. Through his leadership, this program became a cornerstone of Roseville's approach to policing, fostering trust and accountability, and meaningful partnerships that still resonate today. But his legacy cannot be measured solely by his professional achievements. He was first and foremost a family man, a devoted husband, the father of seven children, the grandfather to 35 grandchildren, and even more great-grandchildren. He taught us that success is not about titles or accolades, but that the positive impact we have on the lives of others. His life was a testament of faith, love, and generosity. Whether coaching Little League, volunteering at local events, or simply being there to lend a hand or a kind word, he showed us that greatness lies in service to those around us. For my grandfather, Roseville was not just where he lived, it was a part of who he was. He saw potential in every street, every park, and every person who called the city home. He poured his heart into making Roseville a thriving, connected, and welcoming community. A park named in his honor would not only celebrate his legacy, but reflect his enduring love for the city. Parks are spaces where families gather, children play, and friendships grow, values my grandfather deeply cherished. On behalf of our family, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude to everyone who has supported this nomination, to the city leaders, colleagues, and community members who recognize my grandfather's contributions. Thank you. Naming this park after him would be a tribute to his life's work and a beacon of his enduring spirit. It would remind future generations of the importance of service, compassion, and community, the very principles that divined his life. We miss him every day. His wisdom, kindness, humor, and unwavering dedication continue to inspire us. He always said that one person can make a difference and that you prove that by every action you take. Let this park stand as a legacy and a reminder that a life dedicated to service can leave an indelible mark on the world. Thank you for considering this incredible honor for my grandfather. May this park inspire all who visit it to embrace the same spirit of selflessness, integrity, and community that guided his remarkable life. And as he always said, "I'm glad you got to see me."
Anyone else like to comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment. Is there, can we bring up the list of names again? The slide? Okay.
For the dog parks?
Dog parks, and then the other slide with the other, or is it just?
Yeah, they're on separate slides.
Okay.
Do you want to go back to each one?
My concern about the Rocky Rockhome, is it, would the F.C. be included in that? Or is it just the suggestion that it's just Rocky Rockhome part?
I think we'd work with the family to see what the preference is. Usually, that's what we do is if there's a preference by the council, we certainly can discuss that with the family.
Well, I mean, a couple thoughts I have is that park naming is always difficult, right? It's difficult for us because we have so many amazing residents who've contributed to make Roseville what it is today. So it puts us in a little bit of a tough spot to, you know, pick a favorite. And I'm sure that every family member would say wonderful things about the contributions they made to our city. So we want for it to be meaningful. I'm always in favor of parks that are more descriptive of the kind of the geographic area. I think the idea with an F.C. is we have to be cognizant around confusion for navigation because we have to remember, as much as we're familiar with it or knew your grandfather really well and your grandmother, not everybody does. We have so many visitors that come to our city. So we want to make that navigation easy. You know, I think that, you know, a challenge with naming after people is that often there is limited connection to current and future generations. And, you know, just another disadvantage is that we're having to choose between a handful of residents. But with that in mind, and if we're going to support the idea of naming after a former resident, I would just say that we would want to avoid any sort of confusion. Like we've seen with other parks, right, like Mahan and Mahaney and, you know, even different neighborhoods that we have named.
Ruben D. Nelson.
And, you know, I think Bruce and I might have been on a park naming committee before we went through this process. And we did talk about leaning towards the kind of the geographic areas, too, that make it easy for people to find. So those are my thoughts that if we, if there's support for naming after Rocky, that we would not include the F.C. just for confusion and no quotes or anything like that around a name. And was there a backup name for Rocky's Rockhomes?
It was Basin View or Rocky Rockhome. Those were the two suggestions for the one park.
Mayor, I understand your comments. I think it is, and we have some high school students here tonight. I always think that when you, that a name provides an opportunity to learn more about a person and a history. And candidly, and really without a great deal of thought, what name would be more appropriate for a park that fronts Earl Rush Drive than F.C. Rocky Rockhome? And it'll have an opportunity to say, well, why is that park named that way? So I would be supportive of naming the park F.C. Rocky Rockhome.
So what's in front of us tonight to vote on in terms of the name? Are we voting on the exact name, or is it? I would disagree, I would just disagree with you about like the F.C. Because, and as much as we want for people to understand maybe who Earl Rush was, the reality is, is that if you were to ask a resident, unfortunately, probably 99% would say they do not know who that is. So I think we just have to be cognizant about navigation. So, I think we just have to be cognizant about navigation and, you know, ease of finding, you know, these important aspects of our city. Any other comments from the council?
I would add, I'm kind of leaning more towards Bruce's comments. I think that a lot of work went into this with, you know, volunteers and staff to make a recommendation, and we do have a history. I've enjoyed going to a lot of the parks and learning about the different people that are honored at the parks, so I would favor the Rocky Rock Home.
I would do... I think I like both. I like the suggestions of having either, you know, a context to the, I'll say agriculture or the history of the lands there and the history of people who've been there. I mean, if it'd make it easier for... To find it and it was just Rocky Rock Home, but I would ask the family what they thought. I think it's good to have both because, you know, Roseville started with the history and it continues to go on with different people, and I think it's helpful.
I've always been a person in naming a park or anything else, it should be named after what they're best known by. You know, if they had a nickname, if they were... What comes to mind is, you know, Phil Osnick, you know, and some other people that have come up in the park naming over the years. I mean, everyone has a nickname, you know, and whether or not we want to incorporate that or not, I don't know. But I think that, to your point, Krista, you know, a lot of the history of this city and the knowledge of the people that we have our parks named after, a lot of the people, it's lost on them. So, I think I'm just going to go back to if he was known more by that than just Rocky Rock Home. I think we should go with whatever the more common, when people talk about him, how they refer to him, because that's going to be the easiest way to find him. That's what they're going to be looking for when they look for his name on a park or a wall or wherever it is.
Okay. I think if we move in this direction, maybe we just defer to you to work with the family and also, you know, maybe even our public works and things like that to determine what would be most easy for people to find.
Okay.
So... Okay, we're ready for a motion?
Yes, so...
Oh, you read it.
Oh, okay.
You read it first, right?
Okay, so, tonight, the city council, on item 8.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 25-009, approving park name recommendations. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll take our roll call and start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishell?
Yes.
Councilmember Donza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, thank you for being here. Item 8.2.
Thank you. So, item 8.2 is a Roseville Transit Comprehensive Operational Analysis. Staff has requested that this item 8.2 be removed from tonight's agenda and be brought back for discussion and action at the February 5th city council meeting. So, no discussion will be taking place on item 8.2.
Great, thank you. All right, and we will wrap up with council reports. Does our city manager or our acting city assistant attorney have anything to add?
Nothing for me tonight.
No further reports, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Rakucci, you have any comments tonight?
Just a brief comment. I had several meetings with my... On my water committees and my electric from Regional Water Authority, Northern California Power Association. Actually, I came from their meeting to come here and finish two more meetings here. And we also had a meeting of Plaster County Water and Roseville Water Committee. And most of the committees now, because it's a new year, is starting off with, sometimes with new people, looking at, like we did today, the legislative and regulatory legislation that we've been able to look at, what are some of the needs that we have in our community and our area. And with PCWA, we're talking about Site Reservoir. It's a future reservoir that's... And seeing kind of where its status is and being developed. So, water and electricity is quite active in Roseville.
I'm done. You're true.
No updates on committee assignments, Mayor, just a comment that City of Roseville, we did deploy several fire personnel down to the LA fires, and so I would ask our residents to please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as they battle that fire and navigate that difficult time down there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Albert?
No committee reports. I actually will be starting some assignments this month, and I wanted to just echo Tracy's comments on our fire team, and our thoughts are with them, and the public appreciates what they're doing to help out in our state. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, so, you know, Jenna Cervantes, I think, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I was sitting in a PCTPA meeting when I got a constituent request that a sign had been misplaced there at Country Club, and I forget the other street, where we had a bicycle intersection. She met there, and like many of our employees, people knew her, and that helps with the conversation. So, you know, we are blessed to have so many folks that serve our community, that think about service before self. One of those will be recognized on January 24th at the BIA Installation Dinner, and that's Dan Beans, who will receive the Meritorious Award that evening. Committee assignments, SECOC Board is meeting tomorrow, and then PCTPA, Roseville has... Is in rotation to chair PCTPA this year, so I will be chairing the PCTPA, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to believe it's our first meeting of the year because it has already been off to a robust start, but since our last meeting, I've had a couple landfill JPA meetings. Councilmember Haldishell will be representing the city on that, and as we voted tonight, all of our probably 25 different committees now have all of us assigned to various committees. So, Councilmember Haldishell and I attended the point-in-time training this morning. The point-in-time count will begin or will be the day of January 29th to count those who are experiencing homelessness within the county. I know tomorrow night, many of us will be at the Chamber Installation Dinner. Trying to think what else is happening here, but we're off to a very full start and...
Thank you for doing that. You were at the Chamber Luncheon yesterday?
Yes, yes, Chamber... That's right, Chamber Luncheon.
And you're everywhere.
That's the name of the game, right, for the next two years? So, unless anyone else has any other comments, we will do one last public comment tonight. If you would like to make another comment, now is the time to do that, if you've got other comments to make. Come to the podium, sir.
The podium.
Says on any item that's not on the agenda.
It's not.
Okay, go for it.
I just want to... I want to compliment you all representing Roseville. I moved here from Utah on the 1st of May, and I am super impressed with Roseville. Jennifer and I have toured your utility display at the library in West Roseville. We've toured the Roseville Phone Museum, several other museums, and the sewage treatment plant. That's something you should do if you haven't done it. It's fabulous.
I know.
It sounds horrible, but it's not. Several other things, and this city is very well-run. I'm impressed with the efficiency and the logic that it's run by, because I'm from Utah. And it's been a pleasure being here. I just wanted you to know that a foreigner is impressed.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your comments. We all care about the city, and much of that accolades go to our city manager here on the end, Dom Casey. So, thank you for your comments.
Just wanted to follow up on Jerry's comment and just say, to add to the list, Blue Line Arts is one of our favorite places. We go there a lot, and also the Midu Museum is amazing, and the library system, the library system, all three libraries, the library system is amazing. So, it's great to be here. I moved here in June. I was in Plasterville and prior to that, Nevada and San Rafael, so I love Roseville. So, thank you.
Well, welcome. Thank you for your comments. Okay, with that, we will adjourn and meet back here.
Are you here, February? The first meeting?
Lost on our dates. February 5th, we will all be here. Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. And if you're a student, if you need to have anything signed, come on up. We'll sign... Do you need anything signed? No, you're just here for the fun of it?
The fun of it.
Oh, pictures.
Thank you.